Good evening. Today is Wednesday, December 8th. Time is 6:30 PM and I'm going to call this meeting the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Christie Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, we have one proposed add-on, item number seventeen, closed session. It is closed session to update and discuss contract negotiations for collective bargaining units, closed session per MCL 15.268, Section C. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the minutes, or rather, the agenda as corrected.
Support.
Second.
Charlie? Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the amended agenda. Members, please vote.
I can't get mine to vote yet.
You're okay.
The motion passes seven-zero.
My dialogue box isn't coming up for some reason.
Roger.
My mistake. I hit, I hit the wrong button. I hit mark all yes. My apologies.
Did you vote for us?
Just do a roll.
Seven times.
I moved to the other five.
Do that over. Are we voting?
Would you do?
Still? Members, please.
Just say all yes.
We're all set. Okay.
But have the members vote. Have the members vote.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Yeah, motion passes. All right, moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Support.
Any discussion on this week's bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. DT Energy for $2,000 for Clearstone Street Lighting Project. I'd like an explanation because it's my understanding that the DT Energy and the developer would be paying for all subdivision street lighting. Is that what this is, or is it something different?
I think that's an irregular. Is that the one I approved, Jim?
Yes.
So Mr. Van Tiflin can give us the explanation why I approved that.
So when the original development was done, the developer did pay for the lights. DTE made a mistake and put a light on either property line at a phase line, but did not put in the previous phase a light at the entrance to the subdivision. So we've asked them to make that correction. They are paying for the vast majority of the cost. However, the $2,000 that it costs to run the line to the new location, they feel is on the township. So I spoke with the supervisor. He authorized us to proceed with, with the construction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, and moving on to approval of the previous meeting minutes from November 23rd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, moving on to item number five. We have a request to approve a resolution honoring the De La Salle High School football team, the 2021 Division Two state champions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Who got that?
Support.
I'll support it.
It's like Jeopardy.
So before us today, and in the room with us today, are a large number of the 2021 state championship De La Salle football team members. I reached out to the high school, which is my alma mater, I'm a class of eighty-nine, and alma mater of Trustee Lucido, class of two thousand. And we learned that not only are there just some members of the team from Macomb Township, but thirty-five members of this football program and two of the coaches are Macomb Township presidents. So in their honor, we prepared this resolution. So at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees, Macomb County, State of Michigan, held on December 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM, the following preamble and resolution were offered. Whereas, De La Salle High School, based in Warren, Michigan, fields a football team known as the Pilots. And whereas, the De La Salle Pilots competed in thirteen games in the 2021 football season defeating all thirteen opponents. Whereas, the De La Salle Pilots victories included defeating Traverse City Central by a score of forty-one, fourteen, in the State of Michigan Division Two Football Championship on November 26th, 2021. And whereas, the 2021 state championship is the fourth state title in the past eight years, and the first undefeated season in De La Salle football program history. And whereas, an undefeated football season is in an extreme, in an extremely competitive division can only be achieved through extraordinary teamwork, superior strategy, disciplined preparation, and exceptional physical execution. And whereas, the following thirty-five De La Salle football team members and two coaches are citizens of Macomb Township. Student athletes are Aiden Abraham, Michael Buchi, Keegan Burns, Cameron Conklin, Colin DeHunt, Noah Dobbs, Brady Drug, Drug, Dragash, Dalton Dragash, Jacob Garbino, Austin Gerling, Gavin Grizak, Grizwack, Jacob Hoffman, Colin Koss, Dominic Maizano, Joseph Maizano, Robert McCollum, Joseph Montia, Mason Marajan, Noah Pawlowski, Griffin Phillips, Joshua Rotoli, Ryan Rotoli, Brendan Schaefer, Jeremy Stret, Sharon Sutton, Maxwell Thamaris, Peter Toko, Dylan Todaro, Jacob Tur, Aaron White, Brian White, Joshua White, Javon Williams, Dwayne Williams, and Terrence Turner. And the coaches are Sharon Sutton and Kalani Marajan. And that by these presents, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees recognizes the exemplary achievements of the entire De La Salle football program, and specifically recognizes those thirty-seven pilots who are also members of the Macomb Township community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees, acting as the elected body representing all residents of Macomb Township, publicly congratulates the De La Salle Pilots living in Macomb Township and the entire De La Salle football program. On behalf of Clerk Christie L. Posey, Treasurer Leon Gillette, Trustees Charlie Oliver, Frank A. Cusmano Jr., Nancy Nevers, and Peter J. Lucido III. Supervisor Frank Viviano declares this resolution is adopted. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. This resolution is adopted. All right, I'm gonna call for a brief recess. We're gonna take a couple of pictures. Think we can resume? We all set?
Yes.
Moving on to item six, we have a presentation from Plant and Moran.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, this is certainly not nearly as exciting as a state football championship to talk about, and certainly wonderful thing to be able to celebrate tonight.
Government audit. Yay.
But we'll try to make it as interesting as possible.
Jazz it up a little for us.
We'll do our best. We'll do our best. So, good evening. My name is Lisa Planca. I'm a governmental audit partner with Plant and Moran, and have been pleased to serve as the supervising partner on Macomb Township's audit for a number of years. With me is Justin Kobel, who is a senior manager, also specializing in governmental audits, and did more of the supervising of the day-to-day work with the audit, which, as we have discussed every year, is a very significant process, a very important process, and we're glad to be able to serve the township in that way. You should have received, I think, four separate documents, or three documents and a presentation. So the contents of that we'll cover briefly tonight. The first one being the actual audited financial statement, which is about eighty pages, thereabouts, give or take, of financial information, getting into the detail of all the funds of the township. Our contribution to that is truly just the first two pages of the audit report, which gives our opinion, which again is the result of a fairly in-depth audit process, testing the balances. We're pleased to report that again, as of June 30th, 2021, we've given an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that all the information contained therein, which is put together by your finance department, is materially correct. And all the disclosures and everything, the format of the financial statements follows all of the standards that govern how a municipality such as Macomb Township needs to report their financial data. So that's in accordance with state law, and a very important part of, of the process. But again, our contribution is that opinion letter. All the other information comes from the township, and we help accumulate that. But really, what that opinion doesn't tell you much about is the state of the audit process, or the state of the books and records. So we do have a separate letter of comments and recommendations that was included in your packet that has two sections, one being our required communications at the end of the audit as to how the audit went, is there anything new or different in the audit, any issues that we encountered. And that you'll find is, is a relatively straightforward communication. There were no significant issues, no material adjustments that we encountered or proposed in the course of the audit. There were two new GASB statements that were implemented, but they really were not of a significant impact to the township, slight change in some formatting, but, but nothing that was a wholesale change to the statement. So overall, a very, a very good audit process, I would say, which is really a testament to your finance director's efforts, and tells you that she's keeping the books and records along with her team in good shape throughout the year. The other thing that that really doesn't tell you is what is the financial condition of the township, which Justin will go over a slide presentation we've put together with a high-level overview. But again, we're pleased to be here to report that the financial condition of Macomb Township is extremely strong, definitely see best practices continuing to be followed in terms of budgeting, of funding, of retiree healthcare and pension liabilities, legacy costs, which so many communities continue to struggle with trying to fund those liabilities. And the township really continues to be best-in-class in that terms, and then also beginning or continuing to address capital needs of the township, infrastructure needs, and thinking really long-range of what is, is, is needed to, to best serve the citizens. And then last, just briefly, the fourth document you would have received was new this year. It was a, it's referred to as a single audit, which is an audit focused on compliance with federal grant requirements. The township did receive and spend about $1.5 million of money through, primarily through the CARES Act, to offset certain expenditures as a result of the pandemic. And so we did perform that audit, which was new this year. We expect that could continue into next year as, as that funding continues. And new funding is available, but that also was a very, I'll say, very clean audit report. There were no significant non-compliance findings or other things that we encountered in the course of the audit that would be reported. So I would say, all in all, very positive, but I'll hand it over to Justin to go through just a few financial highlights.
Thank you, Lisa. And so the graph package provided is for the financial results for the year ended June 30th, 2021. What we've included in here is some graphs that provide some insight as to all the governmental funds, including the general fund, police and fire, and all the funds of the township. We'll also have a couple slides on the legacy costs, and then finalize with the water and sewer fund. The first graph here covers the governmental funds revenues. You'll note that in the current year, the total revenue did increase by approximately $1.7 million. Looking at the components of revenue, you'll note that the township's largest revenue source, property taxes, did increase by about $950,000, primarily due to increases in taxable value, which was about five percent. You also note that federal sources that did increase by about $1.4 million. That is, that total of $1.5 million is primarily what was tested as part of the single audit, and those expenditures that were offset by that. The remaining components of the revenues were relatively consistent year-over-year from 2019 and 2020 into 21. The next graph focuses on the governmental funds expenditures. You'll note that there is a decrease of $1.5 million. The primary reason for that is, you'll note, in the second to last category, capital outlay, that's been a little bit volatile. That really represents the investment in the township assets. That did decrease by about $2.6 million in 2021. Overall, there was really no change in the township's cost structure, so some of that decrease was offset by slight increases in, just inflationary increases across the rest of the categories. This next graph focuses on the fund balances of, of the township as of June 30th, 2021, and, and two previous years. You'll note that there was a use of fund balance, which was strategic. I think this demonstrates, again, the investment that the townships made in the, the various assets, as there was a slight use, and that's primarily due to the investment in the, the township's assets. But it really demonstrates the, the strength of the township in previous years, and then going forward. I think this really demonstrates the ability for the township to weather the uncertainty of the pandemic, and the ability to continue to budget appropriately and operate as budgeted as well, and really sets up the township for a strong position going forward. The next two graphs, as Lisa mentioned, really highlights the township's best-in-class legacy cost funding. You'll note here, this is the pension fund, and then the next graph focuses on the retiree, retiree healthcare. You should really feel great about the positions of both of these. They're both overfunded. There's not many local governments in the State of Michigan that would be both overfunded in pension and in retiree healthcare. So it does provide a lot of flexibility going forward. As Lisa mentioned, doesn't, you don't have to continue to, to fund these at, as, well, you will continue to have to fund them, but you won't have to, have to worry about the challenges of funding them, just to get to an adequate funding percentage. So you'll wanna monitor this. As you can see, from 2020 to 2021, there was a significant increase in that funding. You'll note on the far right-hand, the orange bucket, that's your plan net position, that's your assets set aside to fund, to pay for all the, the pensions. That increased significantly, and that can also be, it's extremely volatile. That's just as a snapshot in time. So that could, if the market were to have a downturn, that funding percentage could change quickly. The other component, the total pension liability, that's actuarially funded. That's also extremely volatile to a handful of key assumptions that we do test as part of the audit process. And you'll note that it did decrease in the current year, primarily because the investment rate of return for the pension system increased by a whole percentage point and reduced that, that total pension liability. The next graph, very similar information, again, very strong results here. The funding percentage did increase from 110% to almost 130% in 2021. You'll note that the total OPEB liability, which is again, actuarially calculated, very consistent year-over-year. However, the market returns for the retiree healthcare plan were extremely strong and resulted in that funding percentage increasing dramatically in 2021. And then finally, the water and sewer fund. Again, the fund continues to be well-positioned going forward. This graph demonstrates that your operating revenue, which is that top-line, exceeds your operating expenses, which is essential for continued investment in, in the infrastructure of the township's water and sewer system. So we do encourage that these rates continue to be monitored, monitored to ensure that it's adequate for the long-term strategy of the, the fund. Those are the only prepared comments that we had, but if you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to address those.
Thank you, Justin. Do we have any questions from the board on our audit? No. No, I think we're all set, and I think we know where to find you if we have, something comes up.
Anytime.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Would like to, yeah, comment as well to express appreciation that, for the work your team did, in pulling all the documents, pulling all the records, meeting with the individuals involved, and very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. It was our pleasure as well.
Have a great night.
You. All right, moving on to our consent agenda.
Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety. Uh, wait, we don't, we... Oh, I don't know. Do we know that?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna back up just a minute. Is there a motion to file and receive the financial report?
Move to receive and file.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to receive and file the financial audit report. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, moving on to consent.
No public, public comment.
Oh, you're right. My bad. Okay, we have public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Please remember that you have a three-minute time limit, and state your name and address for the record. For anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lisa Wrangeloff. I live at 19975 23 Mile Road. To answer a few questions that were brought up the last meeting, no, we have no kids, just my husband and I. We didn't get any permits for the inside of the house because we haven't started working there yet. Covering up the bathroom stacks was unusual for us, but it did happen. But as soon as we noticed it, we uncovered them. If this is so dangerous to cover up the stacks, why didn't anyone notify us, by phone, mail, or stop by? We had had hoped to have the ice dams on the roof by today, but unfortunately, the weather had other thoughts. I know we have taken a longer time than most, but we do stuff right, not just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Anybody digitally? No. Okay, so moving on. Now moving on to consent.
Does the chair move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. I have expressed concern privately, and I think at meetings in the past, of emergency water main repairs, and the process by which those are, the emergency vendor is selected. So I have a few questions. How is the emergency vendor selected? Are there, is there a rotation of any kind or mechanism to rotate the qualified vendors? How are materials used confirmed? Are they subject to an audit on request? How many times has an audit been requested? And what percentage of emergency water main repairs are going to Paymar over the past year? Is there anyone who can speak to these issues?
Well, I think Mr. Wranglin's here, and he might be able to shed some clarity on it. I think your, some of your questions might involve some research. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, there's a number of pre-approved vendors, and often it's, and when it's an emergency, sometimes it's a matter of simply who is available and who can get there the fastest.
Yeah, Mr. Viviano's correct. This type of a situation, you take the first available contractor. This contractor hap, happened to be working in the township for a developer. They were available. This was a, an emergency I discussed with the supervisor. This was more than we felt that the department could handle. We didn't have the equipment to handle it. They were, this contractor was two miles around the corner down the road, if you will. The contractors are chosen based on availability, and also, all of the contractors that do emergency work for us are on a pre-qualified list already, pre-qualified, pre-approved list already, so.
So maybe to, just so I can ask this one question. When we have an emergency like this, are there water and sewer staff on hand with the contractor while the work is being done?
That's correct.
And it's being supervised by water and sewer staff?
That's correct. The contractor does not, we're firm believers, contractor doesn't touch our valves. Our employees will turn our valves on and off, and...
So we're aware of what equipment they're using, what materials they're using, through the whole process?
Yep.
Is it a first statement that these workers on the vendor who performs the work are doing this after hours, and that's the reason why there's the overtime rate? I note that there's a foreman who was billed out at one hour regular at 85:44, and then eight hours of overtime at $128.16 for a total of $1,110.72 for the one worker, the foreman. Is that because they're basically leaving their regular hourly jobs and, and then working an extra shift, so to speak?
This repair was done on a Saturday. We had the school across the road to take into play, so we did accommodate them by doing it on a Saturday as well.
Has any other qualified bidder, other than Paymar, gotten this type of work?
Well, I can recall recently, we had Dan's Escavating fix a North Avenue break when they were working on the, the piece of 23 Mile Road from North Avenue to the east, east township border. That comes to mind right off the top of my head.
Isn't it true that Dan's Escavating is the same owner as Paymar?
I can't speak to that. That, that's, that's a rumor. I, I, I don't know that for fact.
Okay. Is there any affidavit requirement of, that the vendors disclose all their interests in contractors and businesses that do business with the township? Do we have any requirement like that, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Thank you, Mr. Wranglin.
Chair, just a quick follow-up. Chair, you mentioned that they're pre-qualified on a list. Can you, do you have any idea, rough off the top, you had a four companies, three, six that are pre-qualified?
There's close to a dozen, I would say, correct, Jim. There's somewhere between ten and twelve.
Okay.
Somewhere between ten and twelve. And I can gladly email everybody that list tomorrow, if you'd like.
And Jerry?
Not necessary for me, but go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so Jerry, can you just run by some of the things that pre-qualify them? I'm sure some of it has to do with insurance, and...
Proof of insurance, and I can email those requirements as well. Proof of insurance, we wanna see a list of their equipment. We wanna know if they've got any pending litigation, any MIOSHA violations, you know, things, things of that nature. They also have to provide a, what's called a K-rating through the State of Michigan, that proves that they have the ability to do such, such work. So those are some of the things we, we look for, yes.
Follow-up for me?
Sure.
The vendors that are pre-qualified, I imagine there's a fewer number of them that are relatively available. In other words, likely to be available for emergencies. Is that...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. You know, and, and we also, we also at times have to pick the right vendor for, to make the job go smoothly, go properly, you know. You know, the, the emergency gets paired with the vendor, you know. You know, some of our pre-qualified vendors on the list are, are more of a, what I'll call a mom-and-pop operation. And, and that's good and well, but sometimes the repair requires a lot of horsepower, if you will. So you, you have to be careful on who you tap on the shoulder, too, at times.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be voting for the, if I might, I'll be, I'll be voting for this payment, but it is a concern to me that we're narrowing ourselves... but it is a concern to me that we're narrowing ourselves, because it has, and maybe you did answer it, were any other vendors contacted, or was it just go to Paymar first because they've performed so well in the past?
Well, here again, there's their availability. They were two miles down the road, that type of thing. You know, they're in town, so I don't want to let the water continue to run looking for a vendor or to bid it out, you know?
But we have, we have advanced knowledge because people are permitting work through your office, where, who's working in town and where, so.
Absolutely.
We have, so if something comes up, Jerry and his staff sort of know who's around already, so they don't have to necessarily run through the list to find out. They might know that Paymar's working two miles away or one of the other vendors, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Chairman, I've discussed this with you out of public session. It may very well be that this is the best benefit for the bargain or best value for the taxpayers. However, I'm concerned about repeatedly seeing water main breaks being repaired by one and perhaps two companies, and I don't know, it's been my experience in business that when there's a single-source vendor who's got a lock, so to speak, that there's a tendency not to get the best value. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano.
I just want to make one comment. In well and all, I understand what Mr. Cusmano is saying, but I think the board and the public need to know that there are, and I'm not a water and sewer superintendent, he is, but just in my own business, anything like that is still an emergency, and if they're not addressed immediately, there could be high consequences for the community. So I know sometimes, I get where you're coming from, and I get where you're coming from, but I think, I still think the best thing to do is fix it fast.
That was my theory.
You know, and of course, I'm confident that our water and sewer and our engineering and our whole staff is aware that there is only, in many cases, the same contractor available, but it's still getting fixed, and we're still supervising it, and we're still getting water back to our public. So I think that's important to keep, you know, keep aware of. It's two-sided here, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not implying any skullduggery on behalf of any township employees or of this vendor, because my concern is, is that there's no mechanism in place to make sure that we're not paying a premium price because of the availability. If the amount was $50,000, if the rationale holds, that would be appropriate because they could get the job done quickly and competently. So these are, these are my concerns, and I mentioned to you, is it the best value? It very well may be, but there has to be some methodology to measure that value for the taxpayers, in my opinion. And again, I'm going to be voting for this because I don't see it out of line with previous experiences on this type of emergency basis, but it's a concern of mine, and hopefully that the new Director of Public Works will address my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any further discussion on the consent items? Thank you, Mr. Wranglin.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Moving on to unfinished business. We have a request to approve a resolution on the abatement of a public nuisance, which was post, it was originally posted from November 23, 2021, it was really postponed from the November 23, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson, can you give us a brief reminder of what this issue was regarding from last meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Before the board is a resolution to declare a particular property and the structures thereon as a public nuisance. We have dealt with this property owner since 2018 with regard to initially the roof, but what we have been able to determine from just looking from the outside and based upon submissions by previous contractors from 2018, that there is substantial and significant damage to the interior of the structure, leading us to believe that it's probably much worse than we actually anticipate. Nonetheless, we have tried to work with the property owners over this three-year period of time. We've brought this matter to the district court, and basically, we're unable to gain compliance from the property owners. Every time we would give more time, there was excuses for the delays, there was no follow-through as to what the promises were, and quite frankly, the house just continues to deteriorate and is a nuisance to the neighbors. We received numerous calls from the neighbors that surround this particular property, even though they have a fence to somewhat protect them from the view. But at the end of the day, this matter was before the board about two weeks ago. We gave some additional time to them to, or the board tabled it to today's date to allow the petitioner or the property owner to come in and speak with the building official. They did so. They did come in one day. Ms. Wrangeloff did come and speak to Mr. Maples and asked, well, what do we need to do to get this property brought up to code? Mr. Maples advised that obviously the roof, at a minimum, needs to be repaired, but that they would need to gain access to perform an inspection of the home because we believe there are some significant issues potentially with mold and other issues related to the property. So she had indicated that she would speak to her husband, and since that initial appearance and discussion with Mr. Maples, nothing has occurred, and we have not heard back from the property owner up until tonight's meeting. So we're asking to proceed with the abatement process. That entails basically adopting the resolution as presented before you. We would then file suit in Macomb County Circuit Court and proceed through the normal court process. There's also all those pendants that's placed on the property to put any prospective purchaser on notice that there is pending litigation related to this property. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. So at the, when we postpone this item, and Trustee Cusmano, correct me if I misspeak when I restate this, Trustee Cusmano, I believe, made the point that we really, we were looking for some movement on behalf of the property owner that indicated that they were going to abate these nuisances themselves. Mr. Padama was here on, from the building department. Mr. Padama, was any permits pulled, or any contractors hired that we know of, has anything been done officially that we can determine if any movement took place on correcting these issues?
No. According to Mr. Maples, on December 1, Ms. Wrangelove came to the building department, spoke with Mr. Maples, inquired if there was anything else short of finishing the project that could be done, and basically, Mr. Maples informed her that at a minimum, we would need to gain access to the structure and see what's going on structurally or with regard to mold, to even start to have that dialogue if anything short of finishing the job would satisfy, temporarily satisfy, the township. And it's my understanding that she needed to discuss it with her husband and would get back, and there's been no further communication since December 1.
Thank you, Mr. Padama. So as far as the township knows, nothing has taken place between last meeting and this meeting?
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
Are there any questions from the board at this time?
Chair, I'd just like to make the statement that I believe our billing department and our legal team are acting in accordance with the ordinance, and I believe that they are doing their jobs, so there's no fault there. I just, however, will not be able to support this item. This is a private property that presents no threat to the public or any children involved. It is a visual nuisance and a potential threat to those that live in the home, but they're adults living in their own private property.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do we have a blight ordinance?
We do.
I think there's been a conflation of the concept of a nuisance with blight. Could you explain the difference?
I'll try to take it from there. So the blight ordinance generally is governed under the Property Maintenance Code, which really deals with how one's property is maintained so as not to impact adjacent properties. The nuisance has very similar characteristics, but in this particular circumstance, although we're terming it more or less a nuisance, it really is brought under our Dangerous Buildings Ordinance. So that's the distinction, and as set forth within that, as set forth within that resolution, you'll see I make reference to the definitions of dangerous buildings. So that's the process that we're following, going under the Dangerous Building Ordinance because of the significant issues related to the property versus just a general blight type of violation.
And how do you see this going once the complaint is filed and assuming that there's an answer? It would go to case evaluation, or would it be subject to immediate action by the court?
So typically, what we do in these type of circumstances is we would ask for injunctive relief, to request an order to permit us access to the property so that we can make a determination if there's even a possibility of rectifying the situation. In the event that there would be, then we would have discussions with the property owner to see if a resolution could be had via consent judgment. If that doesn't occur, then we go through the normal process of a court matter. There's a discovery process and a, I guess I should back up. If we determine that there is an immediate threat to the public in health, safety, and welfare, we would seek immediate relief from the court and expedite a request to abate that nuisance, whether it's demolishing the home or taking other remedial measures. If that is not present, that it can be, it can be boarded up or whatever the case may be to eliminate further deterioration, then it goes through the normal process of a case. Discovery usually is pretty limited in this type of case because it's limited to the photographs and things of that nature, so you typically don't have depositions and things of that nature. At the end of the day, if it cannot be resolved, it goes to trial. We present our case before the judge and ask them to make a decision. We would not be requesting a jury trial. This is equitable relief we're asking for, and hence, we also wouldn't go to mediation or case evaluation.
Has your office, through the chair, of course, has your office handled similar type of cases for Macomb Township or any other municipalities?
I currently have probably 15 of these cases pending through my various municipalities. I have not handled one on behalf of Macomb Township yet, but I've handled numerous cases to conclusion in my other jurisdictions.
Have any of those actions included a quick order to show cause at the initial stages of the case?
There have been some where we have a situation where there's a hoarding situation, potentially. I don't anticipate that necessarily here because I don't believe they're living, we don't, we don't know for sure if they're living in the home or not, but in that circumstance, if we gain access, then at that point, we would be asking for immediate action.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make the comment that I think unfortunately, the court action could have been avoided with the simple action of allowing the building department to just make the determination by entering in the home. The resident has chosen not to allow that, which could avoid the court action, so it's unfortunate that we have to go to this point to follow through with our ordinance when it could have possibly been avoided.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Yeah, I agree. I don't think anybody up here is relishing our position right now, but given that this is three years of attempting to give the homeowner a chance to correct these problems, and given that there's a very high likelihood that this is a very dangerous home for both the homeowners and the neighboring residents, I honestly don't feel like we have much of a choice except to approve this resolution.
Can I make one comment? I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't get to voice this then, but I understand where Treasurer Gillette is coming, saying it's a private residence and it would only be a danger to the residents that live there, but if they ever had to call 911 or there was a fire, our firefighters, our police officers, our EMS would have to enter this home, and now they're in danger. So I think that's something that needs to be taken into account. It's not just the people that live there, it's the people that might have to go there in the case of an emergency, and it'd just be putting themselves in further harm's way than I think they need to be, so. I don't want to ever infringe on anybody's rights or do anything like this, but I can understand where it's a nuisance, and we've given them enough time.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. So if there's no more comment or discussion? Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Treasurer Gillette?
No.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11. We have, is there a motion to extend an offer of employment in the fire department?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Macomb Township is constantly recruiting paid-on-call firefighters, and I'm here to request authorization to extend an offer of employment to four candidates. This position was posted in compliance with the Michigan Association of Firefighters CBA agreement. We received six applications and four were invited to interview. Chief Phillips and myself are part of the selection committee, and we are recommending Miles Adams, Sebastian Ballou, Anthony Chichelli, and Timothy Hensley for the paid-on-call firefighter position. If approved as contingent upon successful completion of a post offer, pre-hire, physical exam, drug and alcohol screening, background check, psychological exam, and we're targeting an effective date on or after January 3, 2022. And this is a budgeted position, positions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to extend the offers of employment in the fire department. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item 12. We have a request to approve the tentative preliminary plat for the Velagios number three and four, located on the west side of Romeo Plink, south of 26 Mile Road, on permanent parcel ID 0806200052. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. So to go back a little bit and give you the history on this property and the process, plat is not something that we see new ones of very often. Probably haven't seen a new one in a couple of years, actually. You might have some final plats coming in before this board, but not very often do we see the preliminary, or tentative preliminary plat. That is the first step in a three-step process. The tentative preliminary plat, I guess you could kind of think of that as a concept plan, then they get the final preliminary plat, and then after going through engineering, they get their final plat. Velagio has been around for a number of years. It's an established neighborhood, but they did go through the plat process when they started a number of years ago. All four phases of Velagio was approved at that time, and they are moving forward phase by phase. They're now ready to go into phase three, and there is a small piece of property on phase three that is on the opposite side of a drain. It is unusable to them, and the developer now owns the property on the opposite side of the drain adjacent to it, so they're seeking to remove that from the Velagio development and put it into the other property where it might actually be usable and they can actually access it. However, by doing that, they're removing a piece of property from a previously approved plat. By rule, their phases three and four, they're now going back to the beginning, and they essentially have to start over. This was a choice by the developer just to make that a usable property. So really, nothing has changed within phases three and four, what was approved years ago, but they're removing a small piece of property across the drain. That's the only thing that's changed. So this did go to Planning Commission, actually, just last night, and was recommended for approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the tentative preliminary plat for Velagios number three and four on permanent parcel ID 0806200052. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to the next item, we have a request to adopt and publish an amendment to the Macomb Township zoning ordinance by amending Article 27, medical marijuana. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is a, an ordinance that was approved five or six months ago by this board. We established a process with which those seeking to cultivate marijuana within the township through the legal process, what's, what's allowed by the state. Certain things there, that we are not allowed to prohibit. And for those things, we can make them go through our process, which includes inspections from the building department and approval through planning. In the course of that process, what we established a number of months ago, everything seems to be going fine. However, in the last few months, we're getting a little bit of pushback because it largely refers to medical marijuana. However, we are required to allow recreational use. A single person can grow a certain number of plants within their residence. We do have to allow that and we're getting a little pushback from people refusing to go through our process because largely, again, it only refers to medical marijuana. So this amendment, and Mr. Tomlinson can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's just a few words, adding the word recreational to the title of the amendment and adding the word recreational once or twice within the ordinance itself.
Would that be accurate?
Mr. Chairman, actually we, it's referencing adult use of marijuana, which is commonly referred to, referred to as recreational, just to clarify. It's really not a substantive change at all to our ordinance, it's just clarifying the headings because we, as Josh indicated, we, we had a few comments made that, well, it only says recreational, even though the body of it referenced adult use as well. So it's just a minor clarification, quite frankly.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, to Mr. Tomlinson, is in your legal opinion, will this alleviate the concerns of the persons who are pushing back and objecting to the way that the ordinance is currently written and its requirements?
They're going to object to the ordinance as it's written, no matter what, but it will alleviate any argument from them with regard to that, yes. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adopt and publish an amendment to the Macomb Township zoning ordinance by amending Article 27, Medical Marijuana. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, moving on to item 14, we have, and we are requesting to reappoint Mr. Ronald Papa to the Ethics Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So if everyone recalls, last year about this time, we ceded our first Ethics Board. Mr. Papa was ceded to the one-year term, which was the initial term for one of the three positions. But now he's up for reappointment for the full three-year term. Ron has served admirably in his role on the Ethics Board. Thankfully, we haven't needed his services, but I appreciate all of his contributions and I am recommending reappointment. Are there any questions? Discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Chairman, do we have any idea or receive a report on how many ethics complaints have been filed?
We've, we have zero ethics complaints.
All right. So we must be either very ethical or it may not be.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're very ethical.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Voice my support from Mr. Papa. He, he ran for the Board of Trustees and is trying to make a contribution to the good of the community. We thank him for his service.
Agreed. Hearing no more discussion, Clerk Posey, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Papa.
Thank you.
We think.
We think. Moving on to item 15. There's a request to authorize the supervisor to accept an offer. Let's see, I'm going to start over. There's a request authorized the supervisor to work with Township Attorney to negotiate and sign a purchase agreement for the eastern portion of parcel ID numbers 200817402005 and 200817426003. These are commonly known as the former Wade Nursery for $160,000. And the other terms discussed and execute all required documents at closing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So a couple of meetings ago, the Board gave me authorization through, to market and enter, or basically market these properties for sale. The portion of old Wade Nursery that is east of the river is effectively landlocked. I think we've had this discussion in the past. As such, really, there's only two viable buyers. It's the neighbor to the north and the neighbor to the south. I discussed whether any other adjacent landowners could potentially split and combine with their own property with the assessor. She assured me that that was not the case, that they didn't have the correct frontage to be able to accommodate such a split combination. That it really was only available to the neighbors north and the south. Also, it is possible that anyone purchasing the entire Wade Nursery could have also purchased it. I discussed it with the broker, discussed it with, internally with our assessor and our planner and our engineer. And we came to the conclusion that the value that the eastern half of Wade Nursery offered very, very little value, almost no value at all to whoever was going to purchase the western side. We do have an offer from the southern neighbor for $160,000. Given that there is only about 2.7 acres of dry land, land that's out of the floodplain, I think it's a fair offer. They intend to, if this is approved, we're going to go through a split combination process prior to closing or at the same time as closing. And they will combine it with their property, which fronts on Twenty-Three Mile Road. So if there's any questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve, to authorize the supervisor to work with the Township Attorney to negotiate and sign the purchase agreement for the eastern side of Old Wade Nurseries, which is parcels 200817402005 and 200817426003, 003 for $160,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item, there's a request to authorize the supervisor to work with the Township Attorney to negotiate and sign a purchase agreement for the western portion of parcel IDs 200817402005 and 200817426003 for $1 million. And the other terms discussed and execute all required documents at closing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So as just discussed, this property was marketed a couple of months ago with the broker. The broker solicited actually a number of offers, negotiated with all of the potential offers. Actually raised from the, from the lowest offer that we first got over the course of a few weeks, increased the sale price by nearly a couple hundred thousand dollars. So very happy with our choice to have a broker involved. The, we had two $1 million offers, as I described in the board memo that's in the packet. One of them was a commercial use and for a car wash and other future unknown commercial uses. The other one was for a, proposing for a landscaping yard and nursery. I am suggesting we execute the sale with the nursery. It mostly because while the price is the same, I believe, and Josh and I discussed this, that given that the property was a nursery and there will likely be a conditional rezoning to go back to commercial, it is a more natural fit with the property and more, more in line with the surrounding neighbors and property owners. Any questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to authorize the supervisor to work with the Township Attorney to negotiate the purchase agreement for the sale of the western portions of parcel ID 200817402005 and 200817426003 for $1 million. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Board. Okay, moving on to public comment of non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side. Please remember you have a three-minute time limit and state your name and address for the record. Anyone who wishes to participate digitally, please, or remotely, please digitally raise your hand.
Hi, I'm Lisa Ryan-Galov at 19975 Twenty-Three Mile Road. The area in front of the new Fire Department has increased in accidents and close calls. Since a new station was built, speed is a main factor. Reducing the speed would help. The signals for truck, the trucks coming out to go to their calls is too small and too close to the station. It's the new yellow one with the nice flashing lights on top. It needs to be moved further away from it. Right now it's close to Sioux. The stoplight signal should be used at all times to get people used to the Fire Department, even though it has been there for 20-plus years. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Ron Papa, 50759 Russell. I just want to thank the Board for their reappointment to the Ethics Board. It's been a pleasure and honor working with Mr. Champion, Mr. DeVillano, Terry Coall and Beth Wheeler this past year in putting together an ethics ordinance for your review. The great thing about working on an ethics board is that it's the one committee in the township that if everything's going well, you'll rarely have to, will rarely have to meet or you won't have to hear from us. So again, thank you very much for your trust in reappointing me to the Ethics Board.
Thank you, Mr. Papa. Any other comments? Anyone digitally wish to participate?
No, it's done.
Okay. All right, moving on to trustee comments. Trustee Oliver, lead us off.
Just to thank Park and Rec and everyone involved in the nice Christmas event we had, it was great. And it's good to see all those people out there, it really was. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano?
Shakespeare says brevity is the soul of wit, so I'm going to just say Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year, even though we're not quite to the end of the year. I want to just state my concern about the addition of item 17 for purposes of discussing and negotiations of the... Well, I'll deal with that one when it comes up on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Trustee Lucido?
Number one, thank you to Mr. Papa. We appreciate your service. Thank you. And congratulations to De La Salle, once again, for the state championship. I know my son and I had a ball watching them all year. We attended a couple of games and watched everyone that we could, especially the championship, so it was great.
Thank you, Peter. Trustee Nevers?
Those were my exact comments. That's what I was going to say. Congratulations to that wonderful men's football team, great school with a great reputation. And also congratulations to Mr. Papa for his three-year reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to also reiterate Trustee Oliver's appreciation to the Parks and Rec Department, to facilities and grounds, to everybody who had a role in the tree lighting and holiday event, our visit from Santa Claus. It was, according to Parks and Rec's folks, the most attended holiday event in the township that we've had. So that's a testament to not only just being a growing township, but we're getting out that it's a great time. And so the Parks and Rec Department, facilities and grounds, and everybody who participated in Fire Department, everybody who participated in that deserves to be commended and thanked for it. And also just like to thank our finance department and any others involved in participating in the audit. I think the, it's underestimated how much work goes into coming out with the, an audit report this clean. So it's a standing work by our folks here in Macomb Township. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to congratulate the De La Salle team. I thought it was very impressive to see how many of those individuals from that team actually represent Macomb Township. That was very exciting to see. Also, congratulations to Mr. Papa and to the Ethics Board for their participation on that committee. And to Stacy Smith, our Finance Director. Being the clerk, I understand what it's like to be audited. And the, in the stress it causes, even though you know you've crossed every T and dotted every I. So we continually get a clean report from Plant Moran and that is to, all because of Stacy's due diligence. So I just want to say I thank, I thank her for that and she makes our job up here very easy. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Before I start my comments, I'm actually going to ask, on behalf of the victims of the terrible tragedy that happened at Oxford High School, for a moment of silence. Thank you. I have a few comments. Again, like echo everybody's congratulations of Parks and Rec and all the staff members that pitched in to help them out to pull off the tree lighting. It's a great event. It was a lot of fun. The kids that were there had a great time. I think Sienna was pretty, pretty impressed and Sienna continues to be, give, you know, special attention to Macomb Township. And he seems to have a great affinity for our community, so I'm glad of that and that bodes well for Christmas. I want to remind everybody that we have, we are taking applications for the Planning Commission. If there are any interested residents who would like to serve on the Planning Commission, please submit your application to the Supervisor's office. The application is available on our website. I'd also like to note, our Fire Department received a generous gift today from the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union of $1,000 worth of carbon monoxide detectors for any resident in Macomb Township who is in need of one. So if you could make use of a new carbon monoxide detector, please contact Station 1 at 586-286-0027. Ask for Mary Beth. And she will schedule a time when one of our very able men in the Fire Department can help and come and install it for you. We appreciate the generosity of Michigan Schools, Government and Credit Union to make that happen. I know we have another meeting before the end of the year, but I do want to remind everyone who has business with the township that the offices will be closed from December 23rd and they will reopen on January 3rd. So if you have any business near the end of this month, please get it in before the holiday break. And with that, there is a request to go into closed session for an update. To discuss the contract negotiations for the collective bargaining units per MCL 15.268C. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned earlier I have concerns in that MCL 15.268 states "A public body may meet in closed session only for the following purposes." Subparagraph C, which Clerk Posey made in her motion to amend the agenda, "For strategy and negotiation sessions connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing." There's been no record made that the union has asked for a closed session and this Board acts through its resolutions and there's been no resolution to request a closed session. Therefore, I don't believe that we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act by going into closed session under the circumstances. going into closed session under the circumstances. If someone has more information, I would consider that.
So is it your position, we need to request a resolution to request closed session before we go into closed, before we vote to go into closed session?
As a party to the, a negotiating party to the contract, we would have to resolve to request closed session.
Mr. Tomlinson, can you comment on that?
I guess I respectfully disagree with the process that's being suggested, that a resolution is necessary. I think that the motion, this being an item added to the agenda, is sufficiently addressed via motion. If the Board had made, makes the determination it wishes not to go into closed session, it could easily vote no on that motion to go into closed session. But it's not by my experience ever that a separate resolution is necessary. Do I agree that one party, or at least one of the parties, has to request that closed session? Or have a motion to go into closed session, yes, but I think the Board effectively is doing that for purposes of the management side in this instance.
Okay. So respectfully, I'm going to have to defer to our Township Council on their opinion on this matter.
Yes, I understand the rationale. It's logical, but I would also like to make inquiry of the Chair whether it's proposed that there's going to be a vote on a finalized contract after this.
There is not. This is for discussion and strategy only. We do hope to move to a vote at the next meeting, so this gives the Board members the opportunity to review and discuss the contract that's being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I withdraw the, well, I'll rise in support of the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. There is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to enter closed session to discuss contract negotiations per MCL 15.268C. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. The motion carries. We are now entering closed session, and the time is four, I'm sorry, 7:45 PM. Open session, the time is 9:04 PM. That closed session was for informational purposes only, and there's no vote coming out of closed session. So at this time, is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, this motion's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.